To tell him where we need him.
Are we broadcasting? Okay, good morning everybody and welcome to meeting of the Warwickshire Police and Crime Panel on Thursday the 24th of June here at Shaw Hall at Warwick. We are being broadcast live over the internet and as everybody in this room knows, the acoustics in this room that we are sitting in are dreadful. So please bear with us because we can't hear each other properly in the room. And anybody addressing the panel will be asked to speak through the microphone. So there's going to be a bit of a delay as we move things around. For those in the room, please make sure that when you do speak, you speak clearly. And we'll see where we go, but you might be asked to repeat yourself on a number of occasions. So don't be embarrassed, just accept it's the room and not you. I've got great pleasure in welcoming Helen Nie, who is joining us today. Helen is from the Joint Audit and Standards Group, which operates in support of the Police and Crime Commissioner and the Chief Constable. And as you know, we've got a joint working relationship with the Police Audit, the Joint Audit and Standards Group that we're developing. So Helen, really nice to see you and thank you for coming along. Okay, thank you. Right, so the first agenda item is apologies. Do we have any apologies?
No apologies, Chair.
No apologies, thank you very much indeed. 1.2 is disclosure of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest members. Does anybody have an interest with any item on the agenda? No, thank you very much indeed. 1.3 is the minutes of the meeting held on the 18th of March, which are page five of your document pack. Can we please go through them and take them for accuracy by page? So page five, page six, page seven, page eight, page nine, and finally page 10. Colleagues, can I ask that you agree that those are a true and accurate record? And I will sign them accordingly.
Agree.
Thank you very much indeed. Do we have any matters arising from those minutes? Yep, Derek?
Agenda item work programme number five on page nine.
Yep.
Page nine, it's the 20 mile an hour speed limits around schools.
Yes.
Can I ask that we bring this up under any other business?
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Chair.
So that's the 20 mile an hour speed limit to be raised under any other business. Philip, yep. Okay. Members, anything else arising from the minutes? No, just a couple of issues from me. I see on page seven, and just note the panel's discussion around performance around rape investigation and note that that has now reached a national issue and has been on the, on the news. So we look forward to further exploring performance and efficiency within Warwickshire around serious crime investigation. I note that on page four of the minutes, which is page eight of the document pack, that we did say that we would look at drug testing and that we would receive a report on drug testing outside the meeting. I don't think we've had that report. Do we have a date when we will receive that report from the PCC's office?
Any views?
Yeah.
It's page four of the minutes. There was Polly Reed noted that one of the OPCC's policy officers conducted some work on, on drug testing at this stage and more information would be shared outside the meeting. Okay, thank you. And members, that concludes the minutes, thank you. Right, I'll move to 1.4, which is public speaking. We, we've got Helen here. Helen, do you have anything you'd like to say to the panel? I think you're the only member of the, the public in the panel.
And I just to reiterate the usefulness of inviting someone from the Joint Audit and Standards Committee to do that joint working so that we are joined up and we can, from both perspectives, do what we can to support the Commissioner and others in delivery in the area.
Okay, thanks Commissioner, indeed. Do we have any submitted questions? No, I've not been notified of any. Okay. Right, we move on to agenda item number two then, which is the report of the Police and Crime Commissioner. Philip?
Can you hear me? Yes.
Yep.
Right, we've done quite a comprehensive report for the panel for this meeting, so I'm not going to go through it all. I thought I might just highlight one or two things. The elections, chief constable recruitment, you're aware of the progress being made on those. On the establishment, just to give you an updated figure, as at two days ago, we had 1,079 officers in Warwickshire. And as you're aware, we are now moving towards 1,100 in next year by the end of March, by the end of this financial year. And then I have ambitions to, to go further depending on, obviously on funding and the ability to, to recruit those and pay those officers when they, when, when they come in. We've done quite a lot of work on, on officer numbers in Warwickshire Police and the record number, I'm looking at John Holland now, is 1,070. We've never been 1,100 before and we are now 1,079. So I can say we are now at a record number of officers in Warwickshire. Crime rates, I'm sure you'll ask some questions on those. Interestingly, you mentioned rate, Mr. Chairman. Actually, on our baseline percentage, that, the number of reports of rape have reduced by a quarter, which is interesting. That's on the baseline, which is, so to explain it, is that is excluding the last 12 months because we feel that the statistics have been skewed because of the COVID pandemic. So we're now looking at, at more historical figures and ignoring the last 12 months. Because if we came here with the last 12 months, I can promise you, all those figures would look a lot better than they really are. So I think it's right to look at a, at a, at a sensible baseline for, for statistics so that people like myself and you can try and get a proper trend rather than just what's happened over the last 12 months. You'll see the holding to account topics that we have done over the last 12 months. And there's quite a good spread of topics there, which I think you would expect us to raise with the Chief Constable and the force. The Evolve Two Programme goes on. We're not there yet. The, the, the end date is the end of September or first of October of this year to get all those three services trans, transformed or, you know, if you like to come to a standalone Warwickshire position. Commission services and grants, we continue to do those. We, we do those on an annual basis. So we'll be opening up the grants and the, the grants applications in October of this year. And then we can't really decide them until we've got the budget settlement, A, from the government, and we've agreed the council tax precept settlement. So those successful will be advised March, April time, but as early as we possibly can. But of course, the current grants, we go right up to the end of March. Those that we feel need continuity, it's a good thing to try and tell them as soon as we can that they get a, get a, a further grant for a further year. Commission services are different. They are all on three, three year contracts, often plus one, plus one. And there are one or two contracts coming up in 2023. And there are some coming up in 2022, which we could extend by a year. So we'll be going through that thought process and evaluation of the commission services, looking at their performance and the outcomes before we agree to extend them. But that, that is, that is in hand at the moment. Volunteers, all of us need to harness the volunteer ethos. We're, we're out now recruiting for more independent custody visitors, a really important job. And one of the statutory things I need to make sure is run properly and efficiently. We're also creating an appropriate adult volunteer position. This is for young people who are in the criminal justice system. And I think this is something that we need to do. It's done in some other areas, but not everywhere. And we've had quite a good initial launch of that with a number of people putting their hands up and say they'd like to, to come forward. They will of course need training, as indeed will the custody visitors. Complaints, police complaints reform, I don't know whether you want to raise that, Mr. Chairman, but as you know, we're on model one and it, it, it's, it's working reasonably well. We are sharing a, an officer with the West Midlands who is conducting some of the legal work on our behalf on complaints. And plainly, I have to make sure that that is properly done and monitored. Road safety, lot going on there. The new road safety partnership with the County Council is working pretty well. From both sides, we have elected members and officers. And as you know, we have some funds and I think it's right that we can jointly decide on where those funds are spent or indeed aren't spent. But that is, there's some good schemes coming forward. There's a very good relationship between my office and the County Council Highways Department and look forward to doing a lot more on that. The collaboration is, is everything else other than roads that we want to collaborate with? Really pleased the Coventry and Warwickshire Mental Health Partnership are attending those meetings. And I'm sure you're all aware that often when a police officer arrives on the scene of an incident, either the victim or the, or the offender or both, there is a mental health issue somewhere within that. So police officers are not trained mental health nurses. And I think it's important that we get professional help and work closely with that mental health trust. The blue light, actually I've just talked about five two. Five one is the national blue light commercial, which I, I'm a director of. There are five PCC directors out of nine, so the PCCs have the, have the vote on that board. That is about collaborating nationally. The big scheme we're being rolled out at the moment is a, is the fleet management. So that all 43 forces are signed up to buying their vehicles, vans, bikes and all forms of sort of motorized transport as a collective and significant savings have been made by separately contracted, I think it's with eight different providers. There's BMW, there's all sorts. And there's Vauxhall, Skoda, there's, and others who have come forward on a proper procurement tender process to give the best deal they possibly can for the cars that we want. So that, that's moving forward. There's more work going on on that nationally, on the air service, helicopters and fixed wing aircraft and drones to see how we can, we can procure them in an efficient way through the 43 forces. That is only procurement, it isn't control of them in any way. They will be controlled and commanded, if you like, by Warwickshire senior officers, not by a national board. But it's, this is to procurement and it makes sense to buy things jointly in my book. Criminal Justice Board, I've now taken over the chairmanship of that. Plenty of work to be done on there. And we're obviously looking at hardly, looking hard at the current backlog of cases specifically in the Crown Courts. Magistrates are beginning to, to match demand with supply and are, are, are beginning now to, to, to reduce that backlog to very little. But the Crown Courts, there are still one, two year delays on some of the bigger trials. So that is something we're addressing there. And for those of you who don't know, I chair this, we've got Her Majesty's Courts, we've got probation, we've got the Crown Prosecution Service, we've got victims organisations, we've got defence barristers. So it's a good organisation to discuss what is actually happening in the criminal justice system. And being the chair gives me no power, but it does give me the ability to knock heads together, get people to work together to improve the system as a whole. And we do have quite a comprehensive set of, of statistics as to whether things are getting better or worse and, and where the pressure points are. So pleased to take that over. The road safety partnership I've mentioned, Redeeming Our Communities was an excellent get together and I hope very much that will take place in other towns in Warwickshire. We've had one in Bedworth now and we've had one in Rugby. And it's about getting volunteer organisations to work together. And there is a, there's a crime and a victim element to it. So I'm pushing that as hard as I can. And I'd like those to, 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 to take place in other parts of the county. And finally, on the Change Your Life, Put Down Your Knife, this was a fascinating evening I spent with a number of councillors. They were all green, whoever our green member is, yep, from Leamington. This was in Brunswick. And it was a, it was a, it was presented by an ex-offender who was concerned that his son, who was at a school in Leamington, could, was having overtures and could be dragged into a gang oblique county lines operation in Leamington. And he's got some, some very good ideas to combat that. I'm well aware in that part of Leamington, there is significant concern about the safety, you know, in the daytime and at night for those on, 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 walking on, on the pavements. And this is something I think to try and, at least we can get the education across and work with everybody else. And he's got some quite good ideas. We are considering funding it, giving it some seed corn funding. It's going to be a charity and we'll report to you on that another time. So we've then got all the statistics that we've prepared of performance, sort of the quarterly figures, I think, from up to late April. And I think that's, that's enough for me, I think, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you Commissioner. Members, can I take you then back to page 12 of your document pack, which is the opening of the Commissioner's report? We'll just work through the report and, and obviously when we come to subject areas, if you'd like to raise any questions, please wave to me. 3.2 Establishment. David?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, well done in increasing the establishment and you're looking to go to 1,100. But it was said at another meeting by someone else that the, since the, the best that you ever had was 1,070, which is like 392 people of that, of the population at the time per officer. And with the population as it is now, we should be closer to 1,400. Is that wishful thinking on my part or is that something that you're aiming that you could get to?
I think that's a really good aspiration. I agree with you. But you'll be well aware that we are transforming to a standalone force, which does give us significant financial challenges. Eighty percent of our spend is on two legs and 50% of that 80%, our police officer pay and overtime and pensions and all the other extras. So I'd love to have 1,500, 2,000 officers in Warwickshire. There's a, there's, there's only so much that the, the residents of Warwickshire are prepared to pay. And interestingly, the bulk of the new officers are actually being paid for by council taxpayers, not by central government. We've had our 80 officers so far from the 20,000 nationally, but the other 120 plus have been paid for by council taxpayers in Warwickshire. And whilst they're prepared to, to pay for, for more officers, I'm prepared to do it. But if they say to me, we're not prepared to do it, we do a pretty wide consultation. We need to balance that with the money available. Good aspiration.
Thank you. Do you want me to have a follow-up question?
Yes, thank you Chair. Yes, I'm, I'm very pleased about the increase in the number of officers. And I think there certainly is a very important role for traditional policing and police being seen and having a high profile. My concern and a concern of a lot of residents is about enforcement of speeding and motoring laws in general. We used to have a traffic division based at Greys Mallory and led by an inspector. And as the number of police officers comes back to, to its previous number and hopefully a bigger number, we don't necessarily have to bring back policing in the same way that we used to do it. And enforcement of yellow lines has been transferred to council traffic wardens, for example. Enforcement of 20 mile an hour limits and speed limits generally is very important to residents. Do you have any ideas about how this might work out in the next few years? I mean, it could be more speed cameras, it could be more visible cars, police cars on the road. What are your thoughts along those lines?
Thank you. We've got a couple of things we're doing at the moment, there's more to be done. I persuaded the Chief Constable to increase the roads policing team, which in effect is taking over the role of that team that used to be based at Greys Mallory. And they're, they're, they are, they now have good kit, they have proper vehicles, they're out and about more than would have happened two or three years ago. And they are the enforcement side of speeding. I mean, there are obviously two other sides to it. The firstly is education, which my office is doing. We've spent over half a million pounds on education of both existing drivers, learner drivers and those about to be learner drivers to, so they understand the dangers on the road. The other thing we're doing is we are encouraging all communities, and this speeding issue happens everywhere in all villages, to set up their own speed watch schemes. I was out last night with my own village speed watch team and people were driving at 75 in a 40 mile an hour limit. And that's why we've got to do the education. You can only enforce so much. If drivers are going to do that, break the law to that sort of extent, there's a lot of work to be done. The third tranche of, of, of speeding and addressing the problem is the engineering works. And that is your own county council, those of you who are county councillors. And I urge you all to, to lobby, it's a councillor Redford now, I think, and, and some of the officers who are in that to, to make sure that they, they major on road safety. Councillor Crump is very much involved in it as the road, as, as the community safety portfolio held. But a lot of this is about highways and about engineering works on highways. One other thing that I, we are doing, we're, we're trying to make the 106 agreements, which I'm sure you're all aware is where the, a, a, a developer or landowner makes a contribution to local facilities following a development. We're trying to get emergency, all emergency services to be statutory beneficiaries of section 106 agreements and SIL payments. At the moment, it's discretionary on the planning authorities, which are the districts and boroughs around Warwickshire. So we're having a big, significant campaign to include the Prime Minister and all the senior ministers to make, put this wrong right.
Thank you. Derek, you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Chairman. Philip, as you know, I am councillor for Waltham and the Lawford's in Rugby and I approached you a couple of weeks ago about a grant for flashing camera, flashing speed signs. However, I've been inundated by the same gentleman every day for the last three weeks about speeding in Main Street in Waltham. The police have been out with a camera, I've got no problem with that. And the parish council, I forwarded the email address from one of your officers for them to apply for a grant for flashing signs, I've got no problem with that. However, I had a visit from the PCSO yesterday because I'd asked him a question about the speed reduction vehicles that we've got. We've got two, I understand. I said, can we have one in Waltham for a couple of hours? And the answer I got was no, because they're booked a year in advance on a, on a route, which I find absolutely amazing. I mean, I want to, what I want to understand is, why can't they be just moved to a village for three or four hours on a one-off once a month?
Right, I mean, I wasn't aware they were booked for a year.
That's what I was told.
Have you got a speed watch scheme?
Yes.
In Lawford? If the speed watch scheme are constantly recording significant excess of speed in a, in a, in a 30 mile or 40 mile an hour limit, you'll move higher up the, you will move higher up the order, the pecking order, if you like, for, or, yes, I will, I want, I'd like half a dozen vans, but they are expensive. What do we, what do we stop doing if we, if we, you know, it's, it's the constant decision on making priorities?
Well, you've just stated you've got a road policing team. It doesn't mean it needs a van, does it? It means you've got a patrol car that sit on the bridges, on the motorways, on the A46, the A45, they've got mobile cameras, they could sit there for half an hour or an hour. And yes, community speed watch, our, our team was disbanded by the police and said they need retraining and they're currently waiting to be retrained. So that's the problem.
That's good to hear. I mean, in my own village, I live in Tysoe down near Shipstone, we've got to the stage now where if anybody walks along our main street in a yellow high vis jacket, everybody slows down. Now that's a result, it slows down the traffic. So I would encourage all of you who've got speeding problems, and I suspect you all have in your divisions and wards, to encourage local parishes to be the, you know, if you like, the, the ignition for setting up a speed watch scheme. There are people out there who are concerned about family members, you know, being significant, if you like, victims of road collisions. And the volunteers are out there, you just need to garner them, get them trained and get them out on the job. And it does help and it does, it also helps the police force in knowing where the particular problems are.
Okay, thank you. Okay, an, an interesting diversion from the discussion about establishment, Philip.
Sorry, can't hear you Dave.
Yeah. A couple of questions then please. Could I ask for a report on how many speed watch schemes there are in Warwickshire? Because I echo the concerns about Warwickshire Police disbanding existing schemes and also problems with setting up new schemes. I'm hugely alarmed to hear that there was an incident of somebody doing 75 in a 40 area. Speed kills and we know that the, the killed and serious injury accident rates across Warwickshire are not reducing, particularly in North Warwickshire, even during the pandemic, we've seen no reduction whatsoever. So without doubt, it is a priority. But I intend to close the, the discussion around speeding and community speed watching.
Can I just wait?
Any member has got any question about?
Can I just make one more comment on that? Actually, the number of KSIs in, in the county have, were halved during the pandemic. So that's another reason for not looking just at the last 12 months, as I, as I said earlier on. The speed watch activity was stopped at the beginning of the COVID, when we were all locked down. And it was considered to be unsafe. There was very few vehicles on the road, if you remember, to start with. But they are now all being re, encouraged to, to get back up and again working. But some, some schemes I'm aware of, the members were a bit fed up with that decision and they decided to, to resign or retire. So we're now in the business of recruiting, encouraging those who are already trained and getting people out on the roads to, 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 to act as a, as a deterrent to people speeding.
Okay, thank you. Just for a point of personal clarification, I attended the North Warwickshire Community Safety Partnership yesterday, where performance reporting was delivered and it demonstrated that during the last 12 months, there have been 40 people killed or seriously injured on the roads in North Warwickshire. That equates to a 0% reduction in North Warwickshire. Thank you, Christopher.
Really a point on the question, Mr. Chairman. I think I'd re-appreciate the Commissioner to understand that accident prevention is far more important than post-accident investigation. to understand that accident prevention is far more important than post accident investigation. Once somebody has had either a fatality or a serious injury, that is too late. We need to prevent these accidents taking place, and the focus needs to be before, not after.
Thank you. Claire?
Totally agreed.
Thanks, Chair. My point was going to be on a similar nature as Chris's. We are all invested in prevention. And we know that the Highways Authority has a role to play in that. But unfortunately, we seem to be, have our hands tied behind our back when it comes to prevention, in so much as we all in this room know, where we have spots in our area which we would classify as accident waiting to happen. However, we can't do anything about that until there is an accident and a KSI, killed and seriously injured rate on that spot. And I agree with Chris's point, we should actually be proactive rather than reactive in that respect, because reactive means there is a killed and seriously injured person at the end of that reaction. And I wonder if we would, as a group collectively, would probably ask whether there could be any, anything from the PCC's office brought to bear within the county council to assist in a possible support of policy change where we can try and stop that from happening. We will work with our highways teams, without a doubt. I do on a daily basis almost these days. But we need, we probably need to have a more collective approach to bring down the accident numbers as a whole, rather than two separate entities working in silos. We should maybe look at some cross cutting themes and policy changes.
Well, that's why we've got the Warwickshire Road Safety Partnership to do exactly that. It existed, it then fell apart for some, I don't know why, but because they probably had very little funds to do much with. So it became a talking shop. But we now, both sides, my office and the county council, put a million pounds into road safety initiatives. But you've got to be aware, a roundabout now is about one and a quarter million. We couldn't even build a roundabout on a million pounds. So it is, you know, this is priorities, this is for your, those of you in councils, nearly all of you, this is about you to go through at your budget setting process. How much are you prepared to put into highway safety matters? And what would you stop doing if you do that?
Can I come back on that?
Oh, Miss?
There's about 10 million quid that I would stop spending right at this instant. And everybody that knows me knows where that's coming from. However, we do have issues with, we have increasing population within Warwickshire, and we do have road safety aspects built into planning for 106. So yes, we do, we do have to make changes to the highway systems. And that's usually borne out on a cost through 106, through developers. However, there doesn't seem to be any change to changes, the existing highways. And that is the problem in the main, is not the bits that we can change, it's the bits that we can't, because of policy. And it's something that we need to look at. And I would urge everybody to take that on board.
Yep.
Okay.
And we discuss this at every meeting of the Road Safety Partnership. Claire?
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, I note your commitment to this agenda. I note the fact that you are substantially funding the interventions that are being undertaken by the Road Safety Partnership. And the increase of another 500,000 on top of the initial 500,000 is warmly welcomed. Without doubt, with 8.2 million pounds worth of HS2 road safety funding coming to the county as well, it's not an area where we should be talking about a lack of money to do interventions. So members, with your support, I thank the Commissioner for the work that he's done already. I know it is a priority to the Commissioner, and he's working hard to bring partners together to enable them to deliver on this area. Can we just go back to the issue of establishments, which is where this agenda item started? Commissioner, can I ask you about graph one? So we know that for the last three years, when we've considered the precept, there has been a commitment from your office to increase the number of police officers in Warwickshire Police. Graph one appears to show over the period, April 21 to February 22, a zero sum gain. Could you explain that?
What we're doing is we, the establishment on the first of April 2022 is going up to 1100. This control of officer numbers is not an exact science. We can't control the number of people who leave. But the Chief Constable can certainly control the number of people who are recruited. And that spike in June was as a result of the May intake, which I went to address the other day, of 24 new officers who started their course. It's a longer process now, because I'm sure you're aware of PEQF, which is the professional, sorry, police educational, probably remember it? Qualification framework, whereby our recruits and new officers now have the ability to obtain a degree without any fees, I might add, payable at our expense. And so, and it's, if you like, it's a sandwich course. There's part practical, part theoretical. So it's a challenge on the force to try and manage their time and their ability to serve principally in our response teams on 999 calls. But some of them are in other departments as well. But the reason, Dave, is that line, if you like, stand still, is because we've told the force with some firmness that they cannot spend more than they have budgeted for. So this year, they're budgeted for 1,050. It's just under, actually. It's about 1,048, I think. And next year, they're budgeting for 1,100. So the challenge is to get to the 1,100 mark by the end of this year without overspending police officer pay by a lot.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Has anybody got any more questions on establishment? Jenny?
Thank you. Not sure if this fits in here, but on page 30, there is a comment there about lack or loss of expertise. I know this was mentioned some time ago with the reduction of the backroom and new officers coming on board. And there seems to be a statement here that with all the new officers, there is some expertise being lost.
Can you just give me the context? Where is it?
It's on page 30.
But 3-0?
3-0.
Okay.
And it is, it's three and four paragraphs up from the bottom. Disproportionate stop and search and out of court disposals.
Is that?
Transfer of large numbers of new officers. Is this being gripped, dealt with?
Because we've had this significant increase in the force, I can't give you the exact figures, but, you know, our officers with less than three years service are something like 40% of the force. So there is automatically, has been a drain on experience, because the older officers have been leaving, and we've taken on a lot more younger ones. So that is the reason for, if you like, the challenge to, on training, to make sure that the new officers get up to speed as soon as possible. But I think that's to do with courts. And stop and search and out of court disposals, rather than generally, I think the point you raised.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. That closes the discussions on establishment. Crime rates? No? Christopher?
One quick point. Philip, in paragraph 3.3, I think it is really helpful to have actual numbers rather than percentages. We have no visibility as to whether drug offences and business robberies are one per annum, or whether they are, you know, 1,000 per annum. So I think that, and direction of travel, which you, in a way, have provided in other areas, would be a much more helpful way of putting that data out. And again, to avoid repeating myself later on, on page 16 of your report, page 26 of the Members' PAC, you've got a table on victim satisfaction. Again, direction of travel would be really helpful to see whether things are getting better or worse than just a one off photograph at the point in time.
Okay, that's a fair comment, Chris. Dave, would that be possible to give a little bit more of the numbers, whether they're large or small? Or can you, could you take it over to Dave Patterson, please?
Good morning. For those that don't know me, my name's David Patterson, and I work for the Commissioner as his lead for scrutiny and performance. Yeah, it's a very, very fair comment. There is a great danger in dealing in percentages. A small variation in numbers can lead to a huge variation in percentages terms. So I can certainly include that. The document that you referred to, it's just the scrutiny report that we've prepared, it's done on a back of a fairly, well, a very comprehensive performance document that's provided by the force. This is just extracting some information from that report, which is actually marked as official sensitive, which Warwickshire can't release into the public domain. But the intention is that the two documents are sort of read together. And in that document, it does show the direction of travel of victim satisfaction. It also gives six month rolling averages. And having prepared the papers for the performance accountability meeting on Tuesday, this very morning, there has been a sharp improvement in victim satisfaction rates for the last month. Is that helpful?
Are you happy with that, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll try and produce a little bit more information. But this is just a summary, and it's trying to be helpful, not give you disinformation or anything. But I think a little bit of context as to the numbers would be helpful to the members of the panel.
Agreed. Thank you very much indeed. Members, 3.4, holding to account. 3.5, evolve. Christopher?
I have raised this argument previously. Evolve may be a good brand name for the process that the force is going through. But in terms of scrutiny, it doesn't tell us what's happening within Evolve. And I think rather than, you know, what would be really helpful was to have a breakdown within the Evolve programme, as to whether, you know, that process involves purchases from third parties, whether there are transformation costs using consultants, or whether there are additional recruitment costs which are included, for your reporting terms, within that title. But if we could please, in future, try and have a focus on what that actually means.
I think that's probably a fair question. I mean, quite a lot of the information about consultants and other, and everything you said, by the way, is part of it. But a lot of it's quite, a lot of it's commercially sensitive. We are in the middle of various contracts, which we are monitoring closely as my job to hold the force to account. I mean, your job in this is to see whether I'm doing, am I doing the right thing to hold the force to account. But we will try and, we'll try and do a report, I'm looking at my staff now, to give a little bit more information, perhaps in the Budget Working Group. Would that be helpful?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
And then if the Budget Working Group wants to bring it to the full panel, that's probably the way to do it. But it's quite detailed. There's quite a lot of sensitive commercial information in there. There are obviously a number of risks at the moment. Before we're over the line on this, and I wouldn't want to give undertakings now that we can't carry out, or we can't see over the line in the timeline. So there's a lot of effort going to this. I talk about this with the Chief Constable at least twice a week, if not more. And we, the force are under significant amount of pressure to get this right.
Thank you, Commissioner. We note and we understand our role to hold you to account. Thank you for agreeing to do this, because as I'm sure you'll agree, the Evolve process is fundamentally important to the efficiency of the organisation, both in the short term and the long term.
I might just add that the fact that, you know, the alliance wasn't terminated by Warwickshire Police has put pressure on us with, in defined time limits, to get these things done. And it's a challenge.
Sorry, are you looking to say something?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering whether the Commissioner wanted me to come in, just to assist and to provide some further information on that.
Just say who you are, Sarah.
Sorry, Sarah Ansell, the Treasurer from the OPCC. So hello, everybody. Yes, in terms of background, the Budget Working Group is due to meet in early August. And as part of that, we will have a more in depth report on the out term position, which is referred to later in here. But that will include a breakdown of the Evolve costs. And they total in 2021 of 5.2 million. So, and as the Commissioner said, it does cover an array of those sort of items that you mentioned, consultancy, ICT supplies and services related costs too. So it should be coming to that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to the report. I've got two questions. I've got Claire, and then I've got Ian. Claire?
Mine was just in relation to the Information Communications and Technology paragraph. It says the programme to provide a standalone ICT function for Warwickshire Police, completed complemented by a managed service arrangement with a private company. Is there any more information?
Just give me the context. Where are we?
Sorry. Page 16, sorry, Philip.
16.
Yeah, 16 and the big number.
Yeah.
Six of 47 on the lills.
ICT.
And then Information Communication and Technology ICT Services. It's just a small paragraph. I just wondered if there could be a little bit more information on that. So it says provided a standalone ICT function. That doesn't mean, because this is a public document, and I don't want people to get the wrong impression, that doesn't mean that the force would be in isolation when it came to integrated working with external partners. Or just can you give us a bit more context?
I think if you want me to do a little bit more detail on that, we'll have to do it in a closed session. Chairman?
Okay, thank you. Can we return to that then, when we do go into closed session at the end of the meeting? We have got some confidential items at the back, so we'll go to that. Ian?
Thank you, Chair. This comment question is as much for you, Chair, and the committee as it is for the Commissioner, in that the last three questions have been, can we have more detail? And as a self professed data geek, I always want more detail. With crime figures, I want to know what the weighted baseline was, how's that calculated, what's the determination of the efficiency of that? Because if it's too short, then it just bobbles around, and it's not a trend. If it's too long, it's dated. I'd like confidence intervals on all the data, on all the figures and so on. But I'm acutely aware that this is all more work for both the Commissioner's office and for ourselves if we're going to try and digest it all. So I think there needs to be a little bit of thought on realism as to how much data we do ask. And I think my opinion, but it isn't a question really, is that we should be very careful on asking for more data, and it should be on specific deep dives. So thinking about the Evolve process, it's nearing the end. And the question, I think, for this panel is, why would we want more information now? Because we can't really affect the process of it, because it's nearly finished. If it's learning for the future, what are we trying to learn? And is this the best time? So there's a data question. And there's, in terms of lessons learnt from the Evolve process, when do you think's the best time to review it? Because there's been so much change, and I'm sure some things have, everything had to be done. So well done to the force for getting through it. But some things will have been done better than others. Some in your mind will be still unstable and will need to change in the next few years because it's not quite right. So when would be the best time to have a deep dive into Evolve?
Shall I start off, Mr. Chair? You're right, this is about, really, down to the basics is what is the panel here to do. At the moment, unlike many other panels, we have two sub working groups, which is budgetary and performance. Most panels don't. So we are the smallest PCC office in the country, and we're probably doing more work for our panels, information and answering questions than any other office in the country, because we have those two working groups. So you're right, I don't want my office just to spend time, the whole time just digging up old statistics for the benefit of some, or say, one person on the panel who just wants to know what happened in the past. And we have huge amounts of statistics and performance summaries and everything. But you are also right, that actually the devil is in the detail. But what we're trying to do is to sum up what we feel the current position is on various projects or parts of the business, so that you can, if you like, you have an overview, which then enables you to ask more detailed questions at those sub working groups. I think that's probably the best way to do it. But I mean, you know, Sarah and Dave Patterson, they spend quite a bit of their time answering questions, producing reports for the panel. And we've all got to think, is this in the public interest? And that's the question. And we've all got to think, is this in the public interest? And that's the question you're asking, isn't it really? Yeah.
Thank you for the question, Ian. I suppose it hits right at the nub of what is effective scrutiny. And one of the things that the panel has done over the last two years now has not only provided a scrutiny function, but we have been proactive in trying to support the Commissioner and the Chief Constable through the reorganisation. And clearly, any informed decision-making has to be informed by an evidence base. So I, I think we've got a good enough relationship with the PCC and the Chief Exec at the PCC's office if our demands become too great to receive feedback. But I also think it's within the panel members' rights to ask questions if they feel that those questions support their scrutiny. I mean, it's an interesting one, isn't it? And I, I have no desire to waste anybody's time. But I'm also conscious that there is a structure in place which we're paying a million pound for a year, which is the PCC's office, which does have the capability to look at some of these questions and report back. It's the, it's the question about who, who holds the Commissioner to account, the structures that are are in place to enable the Commissioner to hold the Chief Constable to account. And how the taxpayers across Warwickshire get value for money for the precept they pay. And we've, we've said before in this panel that the policing precept in Warwickshire is now significant. It is greater than the district council precepts. And at the moment, with the structure and the reorganisation, and we are the smallest force in the country, or Warwickshire is the smallest force in the country, and therefore we are a small P, Police and Crime Panel, but nobody else, to my understanding, has gone into an alliance with another force to do cost savings and delivered cost savings and come out of that alliance. So I think in terms of scrutiny, we've got a real challenge without any doubt. And if we are to do our role properly, then, then to a degree, we're also understanding how to do it as we move forward because there isn't a manual, as we all know, as we've talked about before, there's no manual for a Police and Crime Panel. In fact, there's no national definition about what crime means in a Police and Crime Panel's title. So, so to a degree, I rely on the good relationship that we have with the, with the Commissioner and his office that if they feel our requests are excessive, that working together to support each other, we will recognise that and we will, we will amend any requests in due course. Thank you. Right. Moving back to the report, Christopher, have you got a question?
Just a very quick one on IT and communication. Can you, or have you been assured that when the new system is in place, that our officers will be able to communicate with other forces on the same net as it were? So that anybody crossing the force the other side of the border will be fully aware of what's happening our side of the border?
Well, we've got about eight borders, I think. So there are quite a lot of surrounding forces. Yeah, there is, there is, in fact, if you ring 999011, it goes through a national, I'm sure you're aware, it goes through a national filter and then parceled out to individual forces. I mean, the, the whole communications business is, is a slightly longer term project. You might have heard of ESN, which is an emergency services network, which is a, a plan to put all emergency services, police, fire and ambulance and coastguard, for those who've got coastal areas, onto a single, single platform for communication. And that is, it's proving to be, this is going to cost hundreds of millions.
Yeah, what I'm saying is-
And at the moment, we're saying that, you know, Warwickshire hasn't got that sort of money to do it on our own. So we are part of a, of a national procurement on that. It's being put back, the Home Office are putting considerable amounts of money into it. But there will be a, I'm just getting on to your point about being able to talk to other forces cross-border. That, that's what that is designed to do.
That's all I want to know.
At the moment, of course, there's, there's cross-border cooperation. And those of you who live on the border areas, I've been talking to Dave Humphries this morning, lives close to the Leicestershire border. It's absolutely vital that Leicestershire Police can talk to Warwickshire Police for an incident that happens on a, on a, in a border area. Same with Staffordshire and Gloucestershire and all the other forces that surround us. And I'm constantly pushing the force and the Chief, through the Chief Constable to improve those lines of communication so that any victim gets a better, better, quicker response. But I think you were talking about office, our officers being able to talk to each other. And we have the airwave system. And that is going to be replaced by ESN. So the airwave system will continue and so will, we're upgrading the storm system, which is the command and control system, getting a bit technical. And that should be in place by the end of September. And indeed, we'll be into the new control room at Stuart Ross House when that opens. At the moment, we're anticipating that to open in July. But there again, that is dependent on the proper framework being built and tested and proved to be resilient of the whole IT infrastructure. So this is why it's quite complicated and quite a challenge.
I was rather hoping for a yes or a no. Can an officer who is maybe in pursuit of an individual liaise with a, whether it be Thames Valley, Leicester or West Mercia?
Can I stop you on that one, Chris? We, we said we'd talk about it later on in the meeting under the confidential, so let's go back to that because that's also a very operational question about, about efficiency. Polly, you were going to say something?
Yes, and it was on the same matter, actually. I'm Polly Reed, the Chief Executive. And I didn't want councillor Goldby's question to go unanswered in public, which was a query about the standalone wording that's, that's in the report. It's standalone from the alliance arrangement with West Mercia. It's not standalone in an island on its own that doesn't interact with anybody else. So obviously, the Commissioner's given a bit more information on that. But just to be clear, it's around a standalone procurement process rather than a standalone system. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Bagwa.
Chair.
Hello, can we, can we get the Bagwa, please?
Thank, thank you, Chair. The question on stop and search, why, on page 28. If the black citizens are 12.7 times more likely to be stopped and searched. And this can cause resentment in the community. And although the report has been prepared and has been scrutinised at the legislative board, but is any outcome or and also any future recommendation to the police officers about this reason why they are more stopped as compared to the other communities? Thank you.
Bagwa, the, the acoustics are poor. I haven't really picked up your question. Did you pick it up, Chair?
Question about stop and search statistics in your report and balance between communities.
What's the, what's the question?
Can I just confirm the, confirm the page, Bagwa? Did you say 28?
It's page 28, then?
Sorry, is that 28 in the big numbers or 28 in the small? In the big numbers, okay, right. Right, that's it. Commissioner, it's section six of your report, page 18 of your report.
And the question or the comment, I didn't hear it, Chair.
Bagwa, would you like to repeat it for the Commissioner?
Yeah, again, it's the same, black citizen are 12.7 times more likely to be stopped and searched. Although the report has been prepared and has been discussed at the legislative board. But I just want to find out, is any outcome of that and about the future, in the future, what the police is going to do so that they don't have any resentment in the community, especially in the black community?
So this is about the likelihood of, or the balance between British citizens, Asian citizens, et cetera, in stop and search results? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, I mean, this is, this is, this is not, this isn't just in Warwickshire, this is nationally. We're looking into reasons why it is. We're part of a big disproportionality agenda going on in the whole of the West Midlands. And the figures are probably worse in some other parts of the, of the West Midlands than they are in Warwickshire. But it is, those are factual figures. We need to understand why. We need to understand the causes of it. And to make sure that anyone who is, you know, of a black Asian minority ethnic is, is not more likely to be stopped and searched. Now, there's a number, there's a number of discussions around that as to why are people stopped and searched? Should they be stopped and searched? You know, there are a number of philosophical debates to be had around the whole topic. But I can tell you that it has reduced the number of knives on our streets. And I think it is the right thing for the force to be doing at the moment.
Is that okay, Bagwa?
Yeah, I think Dave.
Thank you. Yeah, the statistics are concerning. As you can see, the disproportionality there is, is quite profound. It has been a subject that we've discussed with the Chief Constable on previous occasions. But as I alluded to earlier on, we have a performance accountability meeting on Tuesday. And the deep dive subject at that meeting is around diversity, the focus on stop and search and the use of force. In addition to that, the Manchester Inspectorate of Stables Fire and Rescue issued a report towards the beginning of this year, which made some recommendations about the use of police powers and disproportionality. And it also provides an opportunity for this deep dive to actually see where the force are in progressing those recommendations. We'd be interested to see what the sort of force have to say. They have provided a narrative around county lines and a proximity of Warwickshire to urban urban conurbations, which import crime into the county. But nonetheless, it's something that we need to explore. We need to understand the reasons why that disproportionality exists. And we need to challenge the force about the, the conduct of the officers and why that disproportionality continues to continue. I hope that's provided some additional detail for you.
Can I, can I just make one further point? What I've insisted on and given the force the money is that all stops and search are subject to body worn camera videos taking place. And I think that has helped probably to protect both the person who's been stopped and searched and indeed the officer from having a vexatious complaint. So I think that has improved in Warwickshire the actual conduct of stops and search because it is being filmed. And they're very good quality films, the body worn video, if you haven't seen them. Hopefully, that gives you a little bit of reassurance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, anybody that tunes in to Channel Five after about six o'clock can watch thousands of hours of body worn video footage on the, the various police services. Right, I have police programmes. Jenny?
Thank you, Chair. A lot of the end users in the county lines are probably middle class recreational use of drugs. Is there any policy for stopping people that might be of a non-ethnic?
Yeah. I think I know what you mean.
Because I'm not sure that the stopping and searching should always be concentrated on particular ethnic groups.
I mean, you've made quite a sweeping statement by, by saying the majority are all middle class.
No, 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 it's not a majority.
Drugs.
It is, no, they are, I, I didn't say that. I said they are a driver in the county lines, possibly not a majority, but they are a driver in it.
I suspect that they're different, it's different in Stratford than it is to in Bedworth, for example. We need to all work together to try and stop people getting into a cycle of, of addiction, be it to drugs or alcohol for that matter. And I'm sure you, I'm sure you're right. There's a lot of anecdotal stuff goes around and we're trying to get more concrete evidence from this. And that's one of the things we're doing with the Mental Health Trust, is to understand why, why people, you know, take drugs and or indeed get addicted to drugs in the first place. And there is a big debate going on nationally about the whole enforcement of drugs laws, which we're taking part in. It's, it's, there's been quite a lot in Stratford where you represent going on about county lines. They've taken on quite, taken out quite a few county lines recently. And the new inspector there, I think he's a good man. And is liaising well with the local community and the town council and others. So I'm, I'm confident that we're, we're doing everything we can, but he who comes up with a scheme to stop people taking drugs is a cleverer man than I am. But we just need to keep working at it.
Thank you. Claire?
This, this might also be something that we, we go deeper into in private session due to possible sensitivities. But the disproportionality report, did that also look at crime statistics and cross, cross-reference crime statistics to these figures that we see here in front of us today? So do we have the proportionality of convictions based on ethnicity as well as stop and search based on ethnicity? Because that could actually provide, again, we've got a report that maybe has some context behind it. It may be that stop and search for certain demographics are higher because of the proportion of crime within demographic columns. It's such a difficult, this is such a difficult area to tread because, you know, you're going to offend somebody whatever you say. I personally think stop and search works. I think there is evidence to show that stop and search works. I think if you target it correctly, it does work. And there's no point to, to take up Jenny's point. In my view, there is no point in doing stop and search for middle class white people if it's not middle class white people that are, that are committing crimes. And I think we have to look at it in a more broader context than just what we've got on the page here. And, you know, obviously, that's probably something for closed session. But I would, again, it's, it's content versus context in the report.
It is with our data, isn't it? And I, I think that as a panel, we have faith in the work the Police and Crime Commissioner's Office is doing in terms of ethnicity sampling to make sure that every, every action that Warwickshire Police take is lawful and has an evidence base and a ground behind it before they do anything with anybody regardless of their ethnicity or any other,
Yeah.
any other equality issue. Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I, I understand, you know, what you both said. And this is a difficult area. I mean, my job is to make Warwickshire safe. And the police need to use all the legal powers that they have to do that. And I think it's important, though, that we do understand some of the, some of the disproportionality that can, can come out of that law enforcement, if you like. And then talk with other agencies and partners, what are we going to do about that? But it's, it's a difficult area. I don't know whether anyone else wants to comment.
I, I think what we'll do with this, Commissioner, is we'll, we'll take it away as a panel and we'll just satisfy ourselves of
Yeah.
some areas that we want to raise with you and bring back.
I mean, interestingly, the, the lady that set up the disproportionality regional network, which we're, we're very much part of, was, was a girl, a lady called Grace Awonu, Awonu, who was head of Crown Prosecution Service for the West Midlands. And she was black. And I think it was right that, that she had, if you like, a cross-section of the community on, on, on that group. And I'm hopeful it will come up with some interesting data that we can do something about.
David?
I think Dave wants a quick word.
Yeah, thank you. Well, whilst I don't lead on diversity on behalf of the Commission, that's responsible to my colleague. What I can say is that the force are engaged in a body of work to look at disproportionality. But that's not just in terms of ethnicity, it's across all protected characteristics. And that's in terms of the composition of the workforce, but also in terms of service delivery as well. So it's around CJ, it's around use of powers. It's around attrition rates for, for court cases, et cetera, et cetera. So it's quite a comprehensive and holistic body of work that's ongoing. Where they are at this moment in time is trying to identify the gaps in the data, try to fill those gaps to get a better picture of where, where the force are and where they need to be. I hope that's helpful.
I think finally, if I could just come in and say, we're obviously waiting for the results of the 2021 census. So we actually do know what the breakdown is in Warwickshire of, of various different communities and indeed men versus women and lots of other things that come into this debate. So I'm not quite sure when that's coming through, Dave. But I think we're going to get something next year, early next year.
Yeah, well, hopefully, Commissioner. I mean, I, I'm just, as I'm sitting here listening to the debate, which I think is, is an excellent debate, I'm, I'm reminded that we discussed the ethnic makeup of the organisation as well. Before Christmas, didn't we, with the balance within the organisation? So, so let me take away that action that as a panel, we'll just sit down and we will think about the issues that are important to us in terms of the, the scrutiny of your efficiency around, around diversity and, and and balance. And as you say, Commissioner, it's going to be an ongoing piece of work, isn't it, as we understand the community that we, we police and support? Okay, thank you. Have you got that as an action? Thank you very much indeed. Oh, members, we're jumping around these pages all over the sort. Let me just go back to page 16, which is page six of 47 of the Commissioner's report. And the comment that I just want to make is to recognise that with the forensic services, a substantial step forward has been made in the work to end the alliance. So congratulations to the Commissioner and his office and to the Chief Constable for putting in place a, a forensic putting in place a, a forensic service that is fit for the future for Warwickshire Police. Right, page 17 or page seven of 47, Commission Services and Grants. Commissioner, thank you. We, we, we had in our pre-meeting discussion about the report that is on the papers and we are hugely grateful to you for the, for the information that you have provided and picking up Ian's point without that. There is a lot of work that has gone into that report. What we've agreed we'll do with it, Commissioner, is we'll take it away to the Budget Working Group. The request for this information is timely because it fits into a wider debate about the role and function of the Community Safety Group partnerships across Warwickshire, which as you know, you, you handsomely fund. And it fits into a review that is being done of the Safer Warwickshire Board and joint working across the whole of Warwickshire. So we'll see where the, the Safer Warwickshire Partnership Board review goes and pick it up in terms of our scrutiny role as a, as a police and crime panel moving forward. But thank you again. It's, it's a very informative report. Members, is everybody, any other views on that or is everybody happy with that? Thank you. Members, can I take you over to page 18 in the big numbers? Any issues around police complaints? Ian?
Thank you. The very beginning of it, this reform, if that's what it's called, says the focus should be on service improvement rather than complaints. So I'm asking you whether you think that's the correct focus, bearing in mind that the rest of it seems to be about complaints. And in my view, that a cultural change from a complaint-based one to, oh, something interesting in quotes happened in the force, how can we improve? How can we learn from this is a very different mindset. So it's a real cultural difficulty. I'm aware the, the health service has had huge efforts to try and go down these lines. And then you get to the whole issue of whistleblowers and so on. So it's by no means perfect. But the idea is that if there is an incident that's worthy of learning, that that's done on a no blame basis, unless of course it's so bad that then disciplinary action has to be taken, there has to be some tipping point there. But in general, if there's an incident where things didn't go quite as you might like, it shouldn't be a complaint-based approach, it should be a service improvement one. So it's your views on that, that statement at the top there. Is there a culture to get learning service improvement when there are interesting incidents in the force?
Okay, thanks, Ian. Yeah, I mean, I think the reason we've highlighted this, this is my responsibility. In effect, I am the appeal court for someone who puts a complaint to Warwickshire Police and is not satisfied with the answer, they have the right to appeal to me. They, and they have no further right of appeal. So actually, it's quite a responsible job if people are severely concerned that the police have given them the wrong answer from their point of view. So that's why we've majored on that rather than the actual running of the Police Standards Department, which is an operational matter run by the, by the Chief Constable. But what we can do, because we are the appellate court, if you like, I can't get involved in day-to-day cases that are ongoing, but what I can do is look at the conclusions when the appeal decision is made, feed that back in, and that's the bit that can try and can improve the workings and the efficiency and effectiveness of the PSD, Police Standards Department going forward. So that's why I think in this report, we've highlighted what we have inasmuch as this is absolutely my office's responsibility. And we have that feedback. But the, the day-to-day running of police complaints is a force responsibility.
If I'm, thank you very much. That's very helpful. Can I add a sort of supplementary question to that in that is there another mechanism within the service to go for service improvement? So this is internal whistleblowing, if you like, but in a non-blame culture approach? Does that happen?
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather go into private session if you want to really dig into that subject, but I do discuss.
Shall I add something?
I do discuss things with employees, but I'm not prepared to say anymore. Okay. Do you want to say anything, Polly?
Yes, just, just to add to your question really, that you, you pose an interesting point because it, it can be quite difficult to draw the service improvement away from the addressing wrongdoing side of complaints. And I think with this complaints review reform, there is an opportunity for us to get more into the service review and improvement side of things. And as, as the Commissioner says, these, these complaints that come towards us as reviews are those that we're the end of the road for, but we're not, we don't, we don't see all the complaints and the more serious ones go down a different road on that map. But it does give us an opportunity to leave a change within the force where we are seeing the same sorts of things coming forward, the same issues being seen again, that it's still early days, I'd say, in respect of how, how the reform's embedding. But there are opportunities indeed to, to take that sort of improvement focus. And, and we need to make sure that we use that opportunity to push through more and more.
Great, thank you both.
Helen?
As part of the Joint Audit and Standards Committee, we do have a role in dip sampling complaints. So we go in regularly and look at all the complaints on the database and actually provide formal reports back to the team. So we are looking at the level of service, not the outcome, that's not our role, but looking at that level of service and how the actual complaint has been dealt with.
Thank you. Thank you, Helen.
That's quite right. I apologise for admitting your role. And actually Helen does that on behalf of the, of the Joint Audit and Standards Committee. I'm very grateful that you do that. And you do come back with some interesting reports and trends and other things that are of interest.
And I think, I think it's worth noting, isn't it, that Chris's point about internal whistleblowers and the robustness of a complaint system is fundamentally important. My goodness, the news that we have seen in terms of Sarah Everard and also Daily and Atkinson yesterday just serves as a useful reminder that we must have systems that effectively hold police officers to account and enable people who are part of the organisation to raise issues without fear. Right, members, any more questions on, on the complaints process? Okay. Down to five one, the Blue Light Commercial Limited. Andy?
Thank you, Chair. Just to go back a section to section 4.5 on road safety.
Good point, mate. Well done.
This was a really nice story in there, very well done to all concerned, but it did feel more like a PR piece rather than a scrutiny piece in the report. And I think, you know, this morning we've had more of a discussion about road safety under the item about the establishment than we've had actually about it's under road safety. So just a request really that in future, could we have more scrutiny items in the public report rather than PR pieces? We can pick those up outside through the press release.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of half fair. I mean, one of the ways we're going to get out this education about road safety is through public relations. Our fellow citizens, some of them are driving dangerously and causing, you know, collisions and deaths on our roads. So we have to use the, the public relations as part of the education programme. It's obviously not all of it. And it's, I think it's quite difficult at the moment because, as I say, we've had a year, we've had an extraordinary year when there've been, to begin with hardly anybody on the road and then it's now building up to getting back to more normal, I would suggest. But it is good news that the number of fatalities on Warwickshire Road is half what it was on the previous year. And we are going, through that partnership which this talks about, we are going to set some pretty challenging targets, that we want to see road fatalities and serious injuries reduced by a, a percentage to be agreed. But it will be challenging. And that will be binding on all, all the partners in, on the road safety partnership to do something and make sure we hit those. So I don't necessarily believe in target cultures, but on something like deaths, what are we doing? We're trying to stop deaths. So we do need some challenging publicly available targets and see how we get on.
Thank you, Andy.
So I take that point, but I think I'd rather see some of that narrative in the report, which is a public report, rather than just limiting it to the, to the PR stories. I think it gives us the ability to do the proper scrutiny on it and it gives a, you know, a longstanding report then for the public to also see. So you've given us more in, in terms of your updates to the meeting than is in the report. So yeah, I think it'd be good to see it in the report.
Thank you, Andy. I think your point is well made. And I just go back to, to my own point from earlier on, that I am pleased that fatalities across the whole of Warwickshire have reduced. However, that is not in the case in North Warwickshire. Christopher?
Notwithstanding the points I made earlier on in connection with the importance of, from the victim point of view of, of reducing accidents, the result, of course, of the financial impact, but the cost of investigation and the cost of rehabilitation or whatever the case may be of investigating those who've died is, I understand, and I haven't got the figures in front of me, but to be in the million, you know, millions to investigate for all parties concerned. And the, the cost of seriously injured is in the high hundreds of thousands per incident. I think I'm right in that, that sort of ballpark. And therefore there is a, you know, huge benefit, not just in the emotional and the physical issues relating to victims and their families, but also just in the overall budget thing, that the more, the fewer victims we have of either killed or seriously injured is a significant saving, saving financial for society as well.
I mean, I, I've met a number of, you know, sort of families that have been victims of a loss of a loved, a loved one over the years. And there's nothing like to focus your attention on road safety and road safety measures by meeting, you know, a, a, a victim of a loved one who's been killed on our roads. We don't call them accidents anymore because they're actually somebody's fault, they're not an accident. They're normally some human being, some human error involved in a fatality and a serious collision. And, you know, we're, we're going to do everything we can firstly to make the roads safer. But secondly, we, we have actually funded on one of those lists of grants at the back is a bereavement counselling services for families who've lost a loved one in, specifically in a road collision. And that's proving really effective and helpful on a human level.
Okay. Thank you very much indeed. I'm conscious of time, members. Can we return to the report? Any comments on the Blue Light Collaboration Limited? No? On the Warwickshire Blue Light Joint Advisory Collaboration Board, members, any comments? Commissioner, just one from me. Congratulations with this group. I, I, I just observed that there were no members of the district councils on that body. So we're, we're cited on the emerging unitary debate. So obviously we do need to be aware that there are other partners who may well have a, a strategic contribution to those considerations. Members, five three, Local Criminal Justice Board. Andrew?
Thank you, Chair. Philip, so firstly, thank you for your comments regarding the, the leadership you're showing on the Criminal Justice Board. But let me just perhaps invite you to comment on a, on a few things I'm going to say. So we know there are years of backlogs in the courts, years. And I know that we're listing cases in the Crown Court for 2023 now. So what that, the consequence of that is suspects on remand for extensive periods. We've read in the paper this morning about suspects pleading guilty, just to get the case sorted. We also have, and I think I mentioned this before, cases collapsing due to inadequate paperwork. And I think if we were to look at, I think on your page 30, there's some evidence there, which is helpful by the way and transparent, so thank you, of percentages of files with issues. These are charging files where there are issues. Up to 20% of the files have errors. Now, within that, there are lots of reasons why there are errors in terms of presenting evidence and all the rest of it. So I think what would be helpful perhaps is, and I, I actually take my colleague's point about the demands on you and your team in terms of producing additional data. But what would be really helpful going forward, I think is a little bit more in here. And I'm going to invite you to go away and think about what's valuable. But something, for example, just one piece of information would be useful, perhaps the, the time it's taking between charging and conviction in Warwickshire to give us as a feel about the progress that's being made in that area and also within, within, in the future. Perhaps you could just highlight for us sort of the, the two, the two things, just two big things that are being done in Warwickshire to get that down, two specific initiatives.
Can I just comment generally, I mean, Andy, Andrew, sorry.
It doesn't matter.
I agree with everything you've said, you know, those are the, you've, you've listed what the problems are. And I'm sure you're aware that the COVID pandemic has hit the courts as an organisation as hard as anybody. And if you think about it with juries and jury retiring rooms and barristers, and I mean, there's a whole host of people. And I'm pleased to say in Warwickshire, both our Crown Courts are open and have been pretty well throughout the pandemic. So much so that the cases are coming from other parts of the country to Warwickshire because we, we're open. So I do have meetings occasionally with the resident judge in Warwickshire. And I think, I think he and the judiciary, which are independent, I can't owe them to account, obviously they're completely independent, I think they have done a pretty good job on continuing, you know, dispensing justice locally in our Crown Courts in, in Warwickshire. Yeah, I mean, I'm worried about the length of time. We're finding that witnesses and victims are getting fed up waiting or they forget what went on and that can lead to a trial collapse. And it's, it's a problem. But I mean, all, all I can do, and by the way, I have a different relationship with the criminal justice than I do with the, with the police force. I don't have a statutory duty to hold them to account. But I do have a, an ability to hold them to account, if you see what I mean. And they can, they can refuse to answer or they, they cannot turn up. But they do all turn up. They do contribute to these meetings. And I think there is a sense in Warwickshire, we are quite small and that's one of the advantages of being small, we can work closely with all our partners who have co-terminals boundaries, same in criminal justice, majority of it. CPS is regional, we know that. Probation has just set up a Warwickshire bespoke service. That's good news. It used to be run on a regional basis. I think that the probation will be better focused now on Warwickshire. I supported that. So, yep, guilty pleas, case collapses is a problem. But I mean, it wasn't perfect before the pandemic either. So the first thing we got to do is to get back to the pre-pandemic situation. And then there's a whole lot more work to do to improve it. I, I agree with what you're saying. I mean, I think, Polly, do you think we could look at perhaps a couple of points within all those to, to come to the next panel with?
Yeah, the, the intent is just to, to, to give us as a feel, is it getting better or is it getting worse? Because at the moment, we haven't got, you know, we haven't got a feel for that.
I mean, I've got the ability to get these people in front of me, you haven't. So in a way, that's, you've got to sort of trust us that we're doing what we can. But it is right that you ask, what are we doing?
And the short answer to that is yes, we, we can do that. And, and I'd like some of these conversations to be more public anyway in, in respect of the LCJB board and how we make sure that, that people know what's going on, improve communications and what have you.
Okay, thank you, members. Any more questions on the justice system? No? Okay, then I think we've, we've done five four repeatedly. Engagement, section six. Andy?
Thank you, Chair. Just interested in the introduction to section six, Philip, where you talk about your plans for engagement and you say you're going to do even more over the coming months to better understand current views and moods of residents. Just wondering if you could give us, you know, some, some insights into what you're thinking and how you're going to do, do more of that just to get people more involved and more aware of your, your role and your profile?
Yeah, well, I often say when I'm at a public meeting on an engagement, if I had to sum up my, my role in one word, it is engagement and listening. Well, that's two words, isn't it? Those are the two words that, that drive me. So, yeah, I've had 15 months of being unable in many, in many respects to go and meet people face to face. I've done quite a lot on Zoom and Teams and all the rest of it, but it's not the same. You don't get the body language, you don't get the feeling of a room, you don't get the atmosphere, especially if there's a, you know, there's a topic which is of great concern to locals, you don't, just don't get that virtually. So we are, we're now building up a pattern of visiting schools. I was at a school yesterday, the Maitland School in Warwick, talking about criminology and they were politics students who've just done their A-levels in criminology and politics. Interestingly, a third of them were interested in becoming police police officers, which is quite, I thought was interesting. So it's going to build up slowly. The first thing we're going to do, which I'm arranging at the moment, I'm going to each district and borough, which will start with a meeting with a member in parliament. It will then move on to a meeting with the local authority, the district council, and we hope to bring in part of the community safety partnerships. I will then go and visit some of the beneficiaries of all those people listed on the back in that particular area. And that will start to kick off engagement. And actually, engagement is, it's like a rolling snowball. Once you start to engage with people, you get more and more topics that you know they want to talk about and we need to address. So, yeah, we're going to get back into full engagement mode as soon as we can. We're allowed to, you know, under national regulations. But there's no point in me doing my job if I don't get out and listen to people. I won't be able to make a difference if I don't do that.
So can we see as a panel, the, I know in the past you've brought an engagement plan to us, could we see the outcomes of some of that engagement activity that takes place over the life of this panel?
Yeah, and I think we're actually going to up it a bit. We're looking at shaping at the moment, a job for a new engagement, who will specifically concentrate on engagement, a bit of public relations, as you raised before, on social media, but principally to make sure that both myself and members of my office can get out into the communities and really understand what their problems are, and then we can begin to address them.
Yeah, I think I'd be quite interested in.
I know what you're saying. I mean, we tried, we've given you a report in the past. It's not always easy to give a, you know, a, certainly hasn't been over the last 15 months to give you a report what we're up to, because things change, or they get moved, or they get delayed, or postponed, or what have you. But I think, Dave, we could probably go back to the old measure where we gave a little bit more detailed breakdown of some of the things we did on the engagement.
Yeah, as you're aware, the obvious do have an engagement plan. Neil Tipton and Precious Williamson are responsible for it at this moment in time. It's probably time to have a review and see where we are and what needs to be done in the months ahead, really. So I think it's a fair point, and we'll see what can be done.
Thanks. Just particularly interested in the so what question, and then the what happened next.
Yeah, I get that. I understand that.
Chair, might I suggest that we roll this into, so it's Polly, it's Polly.
Polly, on.
Might I suggest that we roll this into the annual report, which will be coming forward in due course?
Yeah, I mean, if you could liaise with Andy around, around your plans, I mean, and we will be discussing group makeup later on, on the agenda. So it'll be great. Thank you. Members, six one, redeeming our communities. Six two, regional PCC meeting. Six three, change your life, put down your knife. And that brings us to the end of the Commissioner's report. Before we move on on the agenda, does anybody else have any other questions for the Commissioner before we finish this section? Ah, Christopher, how, why did I ask that question?
Two, two points, Mr. Chairman. One, in section 12 with the appendix, which is page 21 of 47, under your numbering, Mr. Commissioner, and 31 as of our numbering. Sickness. You've got a statistic for police officers and a statistic of police staff, which are going in different directions, but you've got one comment which said these sickness absence levels represent a positive position. But you've got two different trends. So I think, well, I don't understand that. Could you put some more light on, on, with the paragraph, the third paragraph first to the first or the second? Can we have a comment on the other one?
Okay. I mean, every week I get a report from the force on sickness and absence levels. They do hover about, and sometimes one's higher than the other, and I don't think there's any sort of significant trend of anything going in the wrong direction. They hover between three and six percent, you know, on a weekly basis. So this is just a snapshot of, in time. I think the force has done quite well. The absence levels have been lower than other big organisations, and there are 2,000 employers in Warwickshire Police, and a lot of them have to work in places like the control room, where you're close to other people, and the COVID challenge has been significant. But the number, the numbers have been quite low of those who've been forced to self-isolate. And of course, it could be their child at school is in a class where they've all got to self-isolate, so do the parents. So it isn't always, it can be an indirect result, this self-isolation. But I mean, let's hope looking forward, we just get out of this and we can get back to normal. And we have to rely on the medical advice before we can do that. But I think Warwickshire Police has complied with the rules right the way through the coronavirus business, as indeed has my office. And that's really important, that the police or the Commissioner aren't seen to be a source of a super spreader. So it's really important that we do that. But I, I mean, these sickness levels, Dave, they go up and down, don't they?
Yeah, just in reference to the actual comment, I think what I was alluding to is that with COVID-19, it could be an awful lot worse. You know, those sort of sickness levels are acceptable, I would suggest, even though they are going in different directions. So the context is COVID-19, and some of the impact that could have occurred and hasn't really. So I think it's a positive position from that perspective.
My second point is on page 23 of that hate crime, and I raise this for two reasons. One, you specifically mentioned Stratford-on-Avon, or Stratford-on-Avon, whose district council I represent, being an outlier in terms of volumes. I'm not quite sure how the figures, I mean, if you look at April, you've got Rugby 21, Stratford 22, Warwick 23. So I'm not quite sure where you're picking up Stratford on this issue. But one point I do see is if we look at the trend line, and as you know, I'm quite keen on trends, the last six months, all five districts seem to have got a direction of travel which is in the wrong way. So do you have any, I mean, the issue with hate crime is, is this a record, a greater recognition and therefore greater reporting of hate crime, or is this a real trend of increase in incidents? It might be quite a challenged one to report, but I think it is, better reporting is one thing, better, worse incidents is fundamentally different.
Well, I think, I think that's a good, good question. I mean, it's, it's, these figures are a number of reports. So I regard it, I believe there's always been hate crime incidents going on which haven't been reported. So actually, I regard an increase in reporting as good news, because that hate crime is now being flagged up nationally, and then the force can do something about it and has evidence to put resource into it. We work very closely with the Warwickshire Hate Crime Partnership. There's a QIP, who the county council work closely with, IAGs, which are independent advisory groups, which are made up of minority communities. This is a really important thing. I'm, got to address Warwickshire Pride, which I have done for the last few years, and they specifically want me to talk about hate crime and what we're doing about it. So that's my view. It's one of those things where it's a good thing to see reports going up, because people are flagging it up and that it's, that it's going on.
My last point, Mr. Chairman, is, and you might not be surprised to this, on appendix B, and I'm not intending to go into detail on that, because it'll be covered by the Budget Working Group, but I just would like to highlight one point which I will be bringing up in that report, in that group, and that is about the fourth line down on page 27 of your report. It says, the change in the forecast is largely due to increased income from the National Contractive Vetting Service. If we go back to page 26, the variance on income is 300,000, which is commendable, and I'm not in any way discrediting that. But actually, the biggest change is not that figure, but is a saving in suppliers and services of 900,000, followed by the 200,000 of, well, combined 200,000 on other employee costs and premises, which are together 400,000. So we've actually got 1.3 million of savings just in those three categories compared to increased income of 300,000. So I will be bringing that up in the Budget Working Group, but I would just like to remark, remark at this stage that that is an area we want to look at.
Yep, I think that's fine. And I'm sure Sarah has noted that. I mean, we've got to be careful again, this is a commercially sensitive, we are, we are, private contractors are paying our force to do their vetting. And I think it's, the result of any surpluses or losses are confidential for vetting.
Is a comparison between the figures and the report.
Get that. And I think.
Nothing confidential in that.
I'm pretty sure Sarah will produce something along those lines.
Yeah, Commissioner, we agreed that we will, we will drop you an email just outlining the points that we raised.
That would be helpful.
Take that offline. Okay, thank you for that. And I, I never knew it was Stratford-on-Avon. I always thought it was Stratford-upon-Avon.
Town is Stratford-upon, the district is Stratford-on.
Yeah. Oh, I don't know, there'd be two different ways.
If you look, Committee Services has got it right in front of you, Mr. Chairman. My label is Stratford-on-Avon District.
Well, there you go. You've lived and learned, don't you? I never knew that. Right, Claire, do you have a comment about hate crime?
Yes, I do. It was just a bit of clarification. So on this report where it says hate crime has risen, and we talked about it's people, or it's, it's people reporting crime, are these crimes that have been reported, that have been actionable? And I ask that question because I can walk into a police station and report a crime. And cards on the table, it has happened to me by a political opponent who walked into a police station and reported me for a hate crime because I asked, did they pay council tax? Now, this is a thing that I would like to have clarification on. Is it report or is it actionable? Because there are two very different things. And I hasten to add that the political opponent dines out on that claim every time there's an election. This happened years ago. And I think that actually, some clarification on whether this is actionable hate crime offences, or whether it is simply reports of.
Well, I mean, I will defer to Dave Patterson in a few minutes, because he is, he's, he's an ex-Warwickshire serving officer and will be able to break it down. But from my point of view, a hate crime is where there is an element of prejudice involved, and these figures are reported and recorded crimes, either online or into, into our control room. And that's why we separate it out, because other forces do, and we can see what the level of our problem here locally, and we can begin to, to address it. But, you know, there is a level of hate within our society, and we need, we all need to do something about that.
I don't disagree with that. I think hate crime is an extremely broad brush umbrella term that doesn't really get into the nub of it. There are people who are vile, who do vile things and say vile things, and they should be brought to account without doubt. That should not go on. But then we do have people who are reporting things because somebody said hurty words on the internet, on Facebook. That is a petty argument that could potentially be.
Yeah, I mean, you're raising an operational decision, when to prosecute or not, and that's not my business.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm raising the.
And, you know, I'm sure that any serious crime is prosecuted.
Yeah.
And should be.
But this is the question on here. Are these actionable crimes or are these, you know, it's a very broad term.
So your question, I suppose, is one around the Home Office counting rules. And are these incidents that are required to be recorded under the Home Office counting rules as hate crimes, or are they more general?
Are they?
Can I ask Dave, just to expand a bit to help Claire?
Yeah, hopefully this provides some clarification. There are crimes in statute which have a hate element to them, and they're hate crimes. You also have incidents which don't constitute a crime, that don't reach the threshold, which have a hate element to them. And the distinction is hate crimes and non, sorry, and hate, non-crime incidents. This is an aggregation of them both. Going back to the earlier point, whether increasing hate crime reporting is a good or a bad thing, tends to suggest that it is, because I think as the Commissioner says, it does exist and always has existed. The fact that people reporting it is a good thing, so increasing numbers is not necessarily a bad thing. The focus of the force and our scrutiny has been on what happens to those hate crime victims. And we had a deep dive some, a couple of months ago on that issue. And it's good to report that the force have put additional resources into it. They've changed the structures about supporting those hate crime victims. You've got dedicated officers that are involved in the investigation to provide that support to them. So I hope that helps, try to clarify the distinction between the two and what the force and our scrutiny have been focused towards.
Yeah, it's just to make sure that the right things are being dealt with in the right way.
Yeah, absolutely. It is a bit of a confusing picture. Hate crime is a term that captures both those different situations. One's a crime in a statute, the other one is an incident which doesn't actually constitute that. But again, you know, for the victim, both can be equally as bad. It's about actually assessing the impact on the victim, providing the support to them, and making sure that you have the support and governance in place to actually achieve that aim.
Yeah, I'm pleased to say that when, when I had that particular issue, it wasn't regarded as an issue at all, and the guy was told to get lost, basically. So that was, that was good. But I just wanted to make sure that, like I say, the right things are being taken forward appropriately.
Right. And obviously, I'm sure the PCC will be interested to hear any concerns you have about the way that which, in which you've been dealt with. I mean, I, I, just to tidy this bit up, I mean, I, I think there's a, there's a, there's a common statement that I have heard in Warwickshire for the last five years about, it's good to see increases because it means that more crime is being reported. No one's ever asked the question about, at what point does it reach the tipping point where actually it's not good to see increases, because it means more hate crime is being committed. And it's a, it's a bit of a philosophical question, but certainly one that we all need to be conscious of. Right, members, any more questions for the Police and Crime Commissioner before we move on to item number three? No, thank you, Commissioner. As always, robust and full responses. Right, item number three, appointment to working groups. So, members, we have, we have two working groups, which the PCC has already told us is, I didn't know that was unique. Does nobody else have working groups?
Do you know of any others? I don't. No.
Well, it's good to see Warwickshire leading the way again.
West Mercier panel had no subgroups at all.
Well, we've decided we're going to create five, so people. Okay, right. So, members, you have a report in front of you, which is Agenda Item Number Three, which is the appointment of the working groups. Contained within that report is the, is the terms of reference for the groups. So can I please ask you to, to note and agree the terms of reference? Thank you. We also have the membership of the working groups, and obviously we're into a new administration, so those names on the report in front of you have changed. We did have a pre-meeting discussion where we agreed the makeup of the groups. So I'm just going to ask Deb to go through the names that she has on the list. And, members, it's a case of speak now or forever hold your peace. So Deb, who do we have on the two groups?
So I have the Budget Working Group. I have councillors Chris Kettle, Derek Poole, Jenny Fragley and John Holland.
Thank you. Members, is there anybody else that would like to be on the Budget Working Group? John, are you raising, we have you down? Okay, thank you much indeed. Thank you, members. Can I ask for your agreement on that then, please? Thank you very much indeed.
And then the Planning and Performance Working Group, I have both of our independent members, Andy Davis and Andrew Davis, and councillor Dave Homphry.
Barbara, are you, are you saying you'd like to join that group? Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Claire? On the performance. Okay, thank you very much indeed. Okay, then, members, can I ask for, Christopher, you were going to say something, or are you voting before I've even put the vote out?
I know, I was, I have some performance as well.
Christopher on the performance as well. Excellent, excellent. Okay, then, members, can I just ask for your agreement for those nominations then, please? Thank you very much indeed. And then finally, we did discuss the chairs of those groups in the pre-meeting, so can I just ask for your, your agreement around the fact that Christopher Kettle will chair the Budget Working Group and Andy Davis will chair the Performance Group? Members all in agreement? Thank you very much indeed. Members, that completes Agenda Item Number Three, am I right? Yeah. Thank you very much indeed. Agenda Item Number Four is the Work Programme moving forward. Members, we had a discussion in the pre-meet about the Work Programme. Go with me on this one. So I think that the, the outcome of the discussion was to recognise the importance, as we have done in. as we have done in today's meeting, around the, the speed limits around schools, Agenda Item, which is currently listed for the 18th of November, and to seek to bring that forward to the 23rd of September, and just have a look around the speed limits and the general road safety interventions. In return, recognising the, the heavy workload that is on ourselves and the, and the Commissioner's office, we recognise that gypsies and travellers would probably drop back until the, the 18th of November, once we've sorted ourselves out with any changes in the law regarding civil orders. We also recognise the importance of keeping the Climate Action Plan, together with the, the Draft Police and Crime Plan, and clearly, the Draft Police and Crime Plan will form a substantive Agenda Item for the next time that we meet. Members, can I ask your agreement for the Work Plan?
I've just got, just, just got a question on that, Dave.
Yes?
Just on the speeding around schools. I mean, this is not in my remit, this is the County Council business.
Yes.
So I'd just like to know if you're, if you're going to take this up with the County Council as well, or just us? We are consultees like you are on that.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that's a really good point. Can we, can we include it into the, the general discussion that we've had around road safety? I mean, obviously, you, you will have seen today, there is a, there continues to be fundamental support for your, your stance on improving road safety, and it-
I'm very happy to discuss it, but as long as the members are aware that it is not something I can dictate.
Yes.
It's a County Council decision.
May I come in on this? We did actually cover this in the Communities' overview and scrutiny committee, and there is going to be some recommendations coming to Warwickshire County Council, full council in the near future. So 20 mile an hour is one of the things, Jenny, wasn't it? Yeah, so it's, it's actually being brought to full council fairly soon, recommendations from Communities' overview and scrutiny committee. So it may feed in quite well with, with what's going on here. It may also negate some of the, the conversation that we have within the remit of the PCC.
Okay, well, let's, let's recognise that. Derek?
Just a notification from the Commissioner, please. Speeding within schools, Commissioner? You said it's down to the County Council. What's speeding down to? Who's speeding down to?
Any, any alterations to speed limits are County Council, and that's what, that's what's been raised.
My question is, who is speeding down to?
Who is?
What is speeding down to? Who is in control of speeding?
It's drivers that are not observing the highway code.
Yes, and who prosecutes them?
The enforcement is the police.
Right.
Engineering is the County Council, education is what my office does.
Policing is yours, isn't it?
Yeah.
Speeding is the police.
Enforcement consideration.
Yes.
And an education commission.
And education is near schools. So I think your answer is wrong. It's both.
We are, we cannot make the decision.
You can make the decision on getting somebody out for speeding, can't you?
Yeah, but I can't change speed limits.
Let me, let me just try this, so we recognize-
If it's specifically about speed limits, I can't do it. The other thing I need to consider is how enforceable are they?
Totally.
If people are driving in a 30 mile an hour limit, are they going to speed or not in a 20 mile?
Thank you, Commissioner.
That needs thought, together with it.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, we've recognised your commitment to the road safety agenda, and thank you for that. Derek, yeah? Let's think about it as we go forward, let's think about the road safety agenda, let's think about how all members of the panel not only operate within this panel, but in the other roles and influencing areas that they have in the rest of their life to keep the agenda of making the roads safer in Warwickshire at the top of, of everybody's consideration. And again, it's, the Commissioner is right, this is a challenging element. There are various partners who have different degrees of influence over, over things such as engineering, such as enforcement, such as education. So it's a complex area, without any doubt. So, thank you, Commissioner. Right, members. Christopher, and I've got Ian behind you, actually, I was far too quick then, so Christopher and Ian. Christopher, come forward. Right, babble up, Chris, you've lost it, Ian's got there before you. Ian?
Thank you, I was just going to welcome the climate action coming on the agenda, and you probably all know that in April, the government enshrined in law a commitment by 2035 to have a 78% reduction in carbon emissions. I'm saying that because 2050 seems so long in the future, and it's whether we change that wording there, because 15 years is a target that still may seem quite far in the future, but it might be one that's easier for the police and the Commissioner to work towards.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point, isn't it? And I just repoint the point, repeat the point we made in the pre-meeting, where we very much as a panel considered climate action to be part of, a viable part of the, of the Commissioner's Police and Crime Action Plan. Okay, Christopher?
Just a quick one. Action, or the actual organised crime on the 18th of November, the very last two lines, county lines, I'm just wondering whether that is a separate topic. We, we may do it on the 18th of November anyway, but I, I would like to, to this committee to consider whether in fact, given the growing awareness and growing issues around county lines, whether that should be addressed as a separate heading, rather than wrapped up with an organised crime, which is quite a big topic in its own right.
I think, Christopher, the answer to that is we give it to Andy Davis and the Performance Group, and then Andy Davis determines the best way to advise the panel about how we move forward. Without doubt, county lines is a, is an ongoing element of serious and organised crime across the county, and we all know that we've discussed experiences within our local communities that are having a direct impact. One only has to turn the news on every night to watch the news in the cities, thankfully not in Warwickshire, of young people being stabbed to death every day of the week across the West Midlands. So I don't think anybody underestimates the seriousness of the problem. Okay, members, can I ask for your agreement for the Work Plan, please? Thank you very much indeed.
Can I, can I just clarify one thing, Mr. Chairman? I have spoken to our new Chief Constable, who will be very happy to come and address and take questions from the panel, and would you like me to advise her of the 18th of November date for that?
Deb? Yes, please.
And, and will you send a formal invitation for Committee Services? Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Right, members, thank you for agreeing the, the Work Programme. That takes us to the date of meetings, which is item number five on the agenda, and, and three issues on this, on this, this Agenda Item, before we agree the dates of the meetings. Chair, we've, sorry, Commissioner, we've, we've agreed that we're going to look to move the meetings of this panel to the, to the five district councils that make up Warwickshire. So we won't be having our meetings all at Shaw Hall in future. We had a debate about the time. We recognise that 10:00 in the morning is not a good time to meet, particularly for members of the public and partners who want to come in and address the panel, so we did have a conversation about whether we shouldn't be meeting in the evening to facilitate attendance of those members of the public and partners who have home commitments or work commitments. However, we've decided that we'll move them to 2 o'clock to start with. So all panel meetings in future will start at 2pm, but we, we may well review that depending on levels of engagement that we think we've got going forward.
Completely within your remit as to when you want them. If you want them at 3 o'clock in the morning, I will be attending. I will attend.
No, let me be clear, we're not meeting at 3 o'clock in the morning. Okay, so, so, members, Debbie's going to be in contact with us, in touch with us when she's managed to arrange it with the districts about the locations. Future meetings will start at 2pm with a pre-meet, and we'll review that as we go forward. And as we've discussed, one of our ambitions that we will, is that we will get greater public engagement, particularly from elected members across Warwickshire and in those districts. So, members, can I just take you to the proposed dates for the future meetings then? Can I have an agreement on those as well, please? All those in favour? Thank you very much indeed. Members, any other urgent items? We did have the speed limits on there as an adjournment item, but I think we've, we've covered that. Are there any other issues that we haven't addressed? No, thank you very much indeed, in which case we will move to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the exclusion of the press and public from this meeting. Members, can I ask you to agree the following motion that would involve a closed session to consider the exempt minutes under the items? And I propose that members of the public be excluded from the meeting for the items mentioned below, which are the minutes and the discussion about ongoing contracts, on the grounds that their presence would involve the disclosure of exempt information as defined by paragraph three of Schedule 12A of Part One of the Local Government Act of 1972. Members, your agreement, please? Thank you very much indeed. We cease the live broadcast and-